Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. This is our work session for this evening. Can we have a roll call, please?
Bachman.
Here.
Henning.
Here.
Gorman.
Here.
Merkel. Kelly.
Here.
Lieberman.
Here.
And Stevens.
Here.
I move to excuse Mr. Merkel until he gets here, I'm sure momentarily.
Motion to excuse Mr. Merkel by Ms. Henning, second by Mr. Gorman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so Greg will hopefully join us soon. Okay, so we are having a workshop tonight with Enterprise Fleet Management. Sorry. So, are you ready?
I'm, yeah, yeah.
Step right up.
Oh, I'm on TV. Oh, fancy. Man, well, let me get my notepad.
Well, just while Jeremy's getting ready, so this is Jeremy Baldwin with Enterprise Fleet Management. And I think Jeremy was about, when, where did you see him, Kevin, at GFOA or one of the conferences? He gave a presentation about fleet management and then Kevin and I began talking to him around September, just talking about the program in general. And then we had discussions with department heads and departments that buy vehicles every year and whether or not this program would be feasible for us at all because if it wasn't going to work for the departments, there was no point in bringing it to council. So, our department heads, you know, we said it's worth a shot and I wanted to bring it to council so you guys could have an opportunity to hear about the opportunity here and whether or not we want to move forward. So, I'll turn it over to Jeremy.
Yeah, so, thanks for having me here today. My name is Jeremy Baldwin with Enterprise Fleet Management. Try not to get an echo. I don't know how, anyway. So, we are a division of the rental car company. I've been with my role for about 12 years and 10 of those years have been working in the state of Ohio with government agencies. You guys have a list of our Ohio government customers as well as the board synopsis, so that's, that's separate, separate non-staple packets, local Ohio cover customers. We have over 80 or so in the state of Ohio. We have about 1,000 or so government agencies nationwide. And so what we do is we take our metrics on how we run our rental fleet. We have almost 2 million vehicles globally, all types of vehicles from your small smart car, tiny things, all the way up to your, you know, garbage trucks, dump trucks in certain areas. So, we take how we run our rental fleet and we apply that to our clients. So, city of Clayton, the performance metrics, how well we buy, when's the right time to buy, how to run vehicles, what is the right life cycle, what is the right type, all of those costs that go into it. So, it's really diving into and making a good long-term business relationship to really drive down the cost. And you'll see on the page there, we, from the data that we collected from your team over 10 years, we conservatively think we can save you guys about 600 and a little over $600,000. So, that includes everything from your police cruisers to your fire command staff vehicles and then what we call the white fleet, so the non-emergency response vehicles. So, it's really dives into high total cost of ownership approach is what we call it. So, today it's really more of answering the questions that you have. How does this work? Why would you partner with us? Or, yes, why would you partner? Any questions, concerns that you might have. So, with that being said, I don't want to just start rambling for like five or 10 minutes on a whole bunch of different things. Do you have any starting questions and I can kind of start tailoring the conversation from there?
Jeremy, why don't you tell council about how the leasing program works?
Okay, yeah, okay, so great. So, what, we're here to help you with fleet management. So, helping you again, run your whole fleet. How you pay for vehicles is really up to you, but 99% of our government agencies use what's called an open-ended lease. So, there's, it's not a dealership-style lease, it's just a different way of financing. So, there's no miles restrictions, there's no wear and tear penalties. So, when you do a traditional finance, you take that vehicle, let's say it's $30,000, and you pay that whole vehicle off over, let's say, five years. If you were to sell that vehicle at five years, you'd get, for example purposes, $20,000 back. Well, you've paid off 30,000 to get, you know, cash, all of that for 30 grand just to get $20,000 back, so you're tying up all that extra money. So, the open-ended lease is just a different way of financing. Instead of financing it's a zero, let's finance to a higher residual value. So, for this example purposes, we'll say, over five years, we'll have you pay from 30 down to 15,000. So, $3,000 a year, over five years, 15,000. Makes sense so far? Okay. So, when we sell that vehicle for 20,000, you get the difference between the 20 and the 15, so $5,000 of equity or resale trade-in, oops, sorry, to offset the future price of the next vehicle. So, another term for this is called open or equity lease because you're building equity in your fleet versus running your vehicles for 10 to 15 years and having them sell for a grand or two. We're shortening that life cycle and really decreasing your operational expense. I mean, you guys drive about 6,000, 7,000 miles on average. If you run that vehicle five years to 30,000 miles, I mean, no brakes, knock on wood, depends on who's driving it, no tires generally, and you're just living in that preventive maintenance realm. So, the open-ended lease just allows you to replace more vehicles with less cash outlay because if you go from a 15-year life cycle down to, let's say, a five-year life cycle, you're going to be replacing three times as many vehicles. Vehicles keep getting more and more expensive, so if you're going to replace instead of three vehicles for, let's say, 40,000, 120,000, now you're replacing nine vehicles that triples that's 360,000. That's a heck of a lot of cash to come up with when you have other things or better uses of that money versus a depreciating asset. So, that's where the open-end lease comes into play. You can get in and out of the vehicle at any time. Because you're a government agency, you get phenomenal incentives compared to the retail public and combine that with really low miles. Enterprise, we buy a million vehicles as a company, we sell a million vehicles a year, so we outperform the market by about 10 or 11%. So, all gain on resale is yours. So, it's kind of like the stock market. Buy low, sell high, keep your operational expenses as little as possible. So, it's massaging the two buckets of money that you have, the capital and your operating. Any question? Does that make sense? Okay. So, utilizing the open-ended lease, it's, it's, how it works, you know, our job is to then, once we say we're going to set you up on a five-year, let's say, five-year term, for instance, but if we see that two years in, that vehicle, we can turn that vehicle in, sell it because the resale market's super strong and get you a new vehicle for less than what you're paying, we are going to make those suggestions. So, with Enterprise, we're not a dealership, we're a fleet management company, a fleet consultant. We meet with our clients two to three times out of the year and each in those meetings, we're going to evaluate the plan that we started with. Is that still the correct plan? Are there areas of opportunity to keep driving down these costs with these depreciating assets? We're going to look at the market. If gas goes to $5 a gallon again, does it make sense to run trucks a little longer? Or, do we look into some other type of vehicle? If gas drops down to $2 a gallon, maybe we take that truck from a four-year term to a one-year term because the resale market's going to climb again. So, there's a lot of ongoing consultations that we do on your behalf and we bring you data analytics to say, what, here's our thoughts and what you want to do and you guys just say, yes, let's do this and we'll execute it. So, it's really all about taking the money you're already spending on your fleet, using our team, our infrastructure to drive down that cost and we believe we can save you $600,000 or so over 10 years.
So, what do we pay you to do that?
Ah, what is our fees for this? Yes, we are a for-profit company. So, great question. So, whoever sells you a vehicle, us or a dealership, we're all franchised, outside of Tesla, we're all franchised. So, that dealership pays that entity holdback, which is 3% of the MSRP price of the vehicle. So, we'll take a step back here and say, when we buy a vehicle for you, we're going to buy that vehicle at invoice minus any incentives. So, the goal is to be proactive and factory-order vehicles as soon as the model year opens because we already have that plan, so we're not being reactive. So, when model year 24 opens, we're talking to all our agencies, here's the vehicles, we're going to order them at invoice minus whatever incentives the manufacturers give to you and lock in that price. If we have to buy off a dealer lot, it's going to be a little different based on availability, but the goal is to buy that vehicle at invoice price. Okay, so we got holdback. If you do an open-ended lease or a finance, we are the bank. The reason we're the bank is so we can control that whole process of getting in and out of the vehicle at any time. So, we are based off the three-year T-bills plus 350 basis points. You guys are part of Sourcewell, which is a national purchasing co-op, so you guys would use that as your due diligence process and you have fantastic set rates with them. So, that's where that pricing comes in. And then there's a management fee. It's 1/10th of 1% of the purchase price of the vehicle per month. So, that's a mouthful. If the vehicle's $30,000, that's $30 a month that you would pay to Enterprise for all of the consulting and everything that we do. We have 26 people in my office in Cincinnati. That covers our infrastructure, all of our people. So, those are the three different areas where we make our money. And that's all built into that analysis there.
And how about maintenance of the vehicles? Are we responsible for that or?
Yeah, so they're still your vehicle. You guys still would handle maintenance like you currently do. You have in-house mechanics, you continue to use those folks to handle all the maintenance. You would be doing a lot less maintenance because now you're just shortening that life cycle, essentially switching down to like oil changes.
Not a difference on the major repair versus like an oil change or?
I mean, price-wise, right? So, like, you know, if you guys run a vehicle up, you know, you buy a brand-new vehicle, you've done these days, every six months or 7,500 miles is when manufacturers say to do an oil change. So, in your scenario, you're going to do two oil changes a year and one tire rotation. That's about it. Your older vehicles, you're doing brakes, you're doing tires, you're doing engines, alternators, all those other big things. The goal is to get you out of those. Money sucks because all they do is they don't add value to your fleet, they're just an operational expense, sunk cost. So, we're trying to eliminate those. It's kind of like the rental car model, you know? If you've ever rented a car, it's within two years old or under like 30, 40,000 miles, the exact same concept we're applying to you. So, that way the downtime or the, in your case, downtime of being in long for repairs goes minimal. You're just doing oil changes. So, now your mechanics are better spent their time because they're expensive, working on your fire trucks or your police cruisers, equipment, that sort of thing versus maintenance on a really old vehicle.
What about making models? Is there a particular incentive if we would go with like Fords or if you would pick a certain company? Would there be an incentive with that?
Yeah, so, so we go to each manufacturer. So, if we're going to look at for model year 24, we're going to say, we need some half-ton trucks. I'm going to go to Ram, we're going to go to Ford, we're going to go to Chevy, GM, whatever. If you're open to foreign manufacturers, we'll reach out to Toyota, Nissan. We'll say, hey, city of Clayton's getting this many of this type of truck, how much money are you going to give them? So, we take that, put it together and show you what we call a selector list and show you what that cost per mile is. And how we break down cost per mile, it's the price of the vehicle, the operational expense, and then ultimately the resale piece that you get. So, total cost of ownership, what does it cost to run that vehicle for said term? And then you guys, we show it to you and you go, okay, we'll go with this vehicle here. You say, we like that vehicle, great, we'll get it, order it and make that happen and take care of that when it comes in.
You're talking about 6, 8,000 not miles a year. Not very many of those vehicles, about there only go 6,000 miles a year. Most of them go probably 15, 16. Their police cruisers.
The, your cruisers are on the higher side, about 15,000 to 20,000 miles a year. Yeah. Now, your engine, your engine hours are higher, but cruisers in general even, because you see them driving around a lot.
Big donuts, is that what you're talking about?
That, that's, that's, I didn't say that. For the record, let the record show, I was. Yeah, so, it is. Like, so when I started, you know, we started doing, being able to do police cruisers about eight years ago. Took us a while for risk. We're a privately-held company, so we're like, I don't know, running through all that stuff. So, I thought they would do a heck of a lot more miles, but I've, the highest agency I've seen for, for miles on a cruiser is 24,000 miles a year. But, it's not as much as you think, it's more of they're just sitting and idling because you guys are in a set territory, so you're, you're not generally driving all over the place. So, it's more idle time than it is actual mileage time.
So, we currently, as you know, we currently purchase.
Yep.
All of our vehicles. What do we, that we've already purchased?
Yeah, it's, it's a great question. So, we, it's not a, the whole plan is not a rip the band-aid off, get rid of everything, it's, we work our way into it. So, so we showed, so Amanda, Kevin and I, we looked at, we have a five-year replacement plan. So, the goal is over the next five years, replace your entire fleet. So, it starts with the worst of the worst. Everything that's over 10 years old, over 100,000 miles and up until the next five years. With your existing fleet, it's up to you on how you want. We can sell vehicles for you if you want. Worked better at eight, nine years old and newer. Gov deals is greater at those really old ones because you guys have probably seen people drive from all over the country to pay crazy amount of money and you're like, I, I would, I'd pay to get rid of that vehicle. You're giving me money? So, so that comes into, so when it comes to selling your vehicles, we have a full-time team. We have seven people in Cincinnati who sell for us. We get the values on your fleet and go, does it make sense for us to sell or for you to sell? So, we'll, we identify that every year and you guys just determine. On your existing fleet, if you just say, you know what, we're going to gov deals at all, you can, it's fine with us.
I may have missed this, but on the handout that you gave us.
Yeah.
That you have cities, townships, villages, counties, et cetera. What are the highlighted ones?
Those are the ones that are local around here.
Okay.
That's all. I was just trying to draw, because there's a whole bunch of names on there, I was just trying to draw tent people who are in the vicinity of Clayton.
Montgomery County made the list.
Montgomery County? They're not a customer of ours yet.
I mean, they're not a county, not a county car.
No, no, those are, those are, those are our customers. Those are our customers, yeah.
They're just not close.
Yes, yeah. So, that, those are all the, unless Cleveland hasn't told me, because we have a separate office in Cleveland, those are, to my knowledge, every customer in Ohio, government agency that's a partner of ours so far. So, I like to share that because it lets you know, you're not the first one to do this. And if you know anybody on that list, feel free to reach out to them or we can get you their contact information.
Well, I do like the idea of having newer vehicles all the time. That's, I've had personal leases before and that's the plus about having a lease. I guess, you know, my question would be, you know, kind of put it on Kevin's back to see the numbers crunch, you know, to see that it does make sense for us.
Yeah. You know, just as a, definitely cash flow, we're not showing out, you know, Matt's getting one cruiser this year and he's got $50,000 budgeted. If we want to be spending $50,000 for one car now, we can get three, four cars. So, and one thing that's, he talked about is too, is if we're not, we can get out anytime we want. We don't have, we could buy cars on our own if we wanted to, whatever, we can see if it works or not and, and leave or, you know, if it is working, we can stay with them. We're not, we're not stuck on just going through them.
Yeah, there's no, there's no like old cellphone contracts or I signed up for two years or Spectrum or whatever have you. The only thing you're ever on the hook for with Enterprise, and it's, and each vehicle's its own specific contract, that's how our system is set up. So, the only thing you're ever on the hook for is where have you paid down the vehicle to what it sells for in the market? That's it. So, because of your incentives and your low miles, you're generally at a break-even within 12 to 18 months, somewhere in there based on the type of vehicle. That means 18 months in, you say, you know what, Jeremy, you're full of crap, kick you to the curb, you can turn in all those vehicles, we can sell them, you could just say, we're not going to get you anymore, you could buy those out for what you've paid it down to, you could continue to pay off the lease. It's completely flexible. So, there's no long-term commitment or anything with us. At any time, you're just like, nah, we want to go back to what we're doing, you can do that.
I have just one more question. So, the cars that we would be leasing, especially the police cruisers, are heavily modified. So, does that?
Doesn't matter.
What is that? That doesn't matter?
Yeah, they're your vehicles. So, so how, how it's working is we'll work with your chief and his team and go, okay, you have an aftermarket vendor that you probably like to use, it's either KE Rose or PNR, maybe Par Safety. You get that quote, aftermarket quote, send it to me so we have it so we can coordinate the logistics. So, we, we'll build up the chassis, so the vehicle options, whatever they need for that. When that vehicle comes in, we'll work with the lettering company, we'll work with the aftermarket company to coordinate it. So, when your team gets it, everything's done. So, they just toss their equipment in and go away. So, we handle all the logistics. It's a turnkey program for you guys too. So, they don't have to wonder, where's my vehicles? Because you lose oversight. When you place an order, how are you guys currently doing it? You have no oversight, vehicles just randomly show up, then you're calling the aftermarket vendor and you're doing that delay. With Enterprise, we have full visibility and you guys have full visibility, so we know, once that vehicle gets a production date, we're calling said aftermarket vendor, order that equipment, it should be in here in, you know, two weeks, three weeks, whatever that might be. So, that way the equipment's in and the vehicle's there to reduce as much downtime waiting for it. So, we're way ahead on the scheduling or more proactive on the scheduling of that too.
Currently, Matt, he doesn't know, he gets maybe a week advance when the, when the new cruisers come in. So, when they come in, then he has to call, he said KE Rose, set up a time, we wait a couple of weeks. Then you got to have him and somebody else take the cruiser over, drop it off and come back. And once they get that done, then they have to pick it up, take it to Yipes Strikes and get it taken care of and come back. So, there is a lot of downtime just traveling back and forth and setting up the point.
So, we coordinate all of that. So, the vehicle will go to KE Rose or Yipes depending on the timeframe and then they'll swap them. So, then we work with the aftermarket vendors to drive the vehicles back and forth for us. And then it'll be, we'll let you know when said department head ready, when it's ready to be picked up and we'll coordinate, do you want us to get it? Do you want it, bring it to you or do you want to get it? Whatever's easiest for everybody.
Are you factoring in your, the cost savings, you know, 617,000, are you, are you factoring in that, kind of those efficiencies as well for us?
Yeah, so, in the analysis we, that we ran include all aftermarket equipment, include $20,000 for your outfit for police cruisers, included 15,000 or so for your medium, medium-duty like your parks types, dumps and service bodies and about $3,000 for strobes and all the other pickup trucks. You may not do that on each vehicle, but we're going to build it in conservatively. Some vehicles, you might transfer some equipment, so it might not be as expensive, but our analysis, we're showing you every time you get a vehicle, it's all brand-new equipment. So, yes, long answer.
So, when we turn them back in to get new ones, I mean, do we turn them in as-is or do we remove the equipment or?
Yeah, we, we will DID that for you. So, no one will ever know it was a city of Clayton. We don't need your vehicle running over in the Middle East with your logo and getting on YouTube. I don't know if you saw the American Red Cross or, no, it was some HVAC construction company in Florida. They, someone, they sold their vehicle and then removed their logos and was flying around the Middle East there. Not good.
Well, the logos I get, but I'm talking about the lights and everything else.
We have to remove all the light bars.
Yeah, we can, if they want to reuse those.
Yeah, if, if there's any equipment that should, that they would want to transfer, we will coordinate the logistics to transfer that. If you don't want to do it, it costs $500 to remove all the equipment. So, like PNR charges city of Monroe and Loveland and whoever else, 500 bucks to remove that. We only remove the pieces you have to remove, which is the light bars and the sirens. Everything else is sold as-is because it's a police cruiser, it's going to be repurposed as a police cruiser. There's two major dealerships that keep buying these, dealership in Chicago and a dealership in Tennessee.
So, if I understand how this works, you actually retain title to the vehicles?
Yeah, we, we hold ti, we hold title of the vehicle. You still have all ownership rights to it, but we hold title, so that's the flexibility of getting in and out at any time. We, we also can't sell you a vehicle outright because we would put dealerships out of businesses and we like renting to dealerships, so.
I, I was just looking at, at it from a liability standpoint.
We're the less, it's just like financing, we're the less sore, you're the less E. I mean, nothing, you know, same, you guys, again, it totaled the vehicle, paid, it followed through that same insurance, insurance program. I mean, ultimately, there's, we're, because we're the title holder, we could eventually at fault, be at fault for it. There are states out there that have vicarious liability laws, that's, title holder is the ultimate responsible party. Luckily, Ohio doesn't, still isn't one of those, so that's good. I mean, for Enterprise's sake. For Enterprise's sake.
More for you.
Oh, yes, yes.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, yes.
They're still longer.
Yes. Yeah, liability-wise, I mean, you guys are still going to run it under your insurance program because you guys have fantastic rates as a government agency compared to. We have an insurance program, but I've yet to see that make, comes close to government rates.
Can you get vehicles readily now? A couple of years, or last year you had to wait, or the dealers had to wait?
Uh, so, industry update, we are a little better. So, your SUVs, your, outside of the Chevy Tahoe, the Ford Explorer, your large SUVs, all the other manufacturers, SUVs and sedans are starting to be up. They're up 30% than they were last year. Pickup trucks are up about 12% more. That's why the resale's dropped 14% in the last six months because there's more on the ground. Cargo vans, EVs, hybrids, they're, you're kind of, you're diamonds in the rough. If you're lucky to find one, just hold on to it. Police cruisers in 20, your, Police Intercept Utilities in 2022, Ford said, we are going to build the least amount in history and then they said, hold on, 2023, we're going to beat that, we're going to build even less for 2023. So, when it comes to police cruisers, your Intercept Utilities, it's, we can place the orders, we can hope Ford builds it. Everyone's in the same boat, every agency, like Ford is. They're putting their more, they're putting more resources into retail-style vehicles because they make more money there.
Is anybody on this list using battery-operated car or vehicle?
Uh, city, city of Logan actually has two Tesla Model Y police cruisers, fully converted. So.
Captain's?
City of Logan, Hawking Hills. So, city of Logan, I worked with them for 18 years to, or 18 months to figure out all the patents and stuff, but they're pretty cool. $80,000, but they're pretty cool. Yeah, we have, I mean, there's, we have EVs, they're not as common in the Midwest, you know, we just, it's just not, the infrastructure's not everywhere. It's growing. I mean, yep. If you want to meet, we, I, I, I can get you any vehicle you want. Yes. Yes. It just depends on what you want to pay for, so.
Are there any vehicles that you would not carry or not cover under this?
So, we, the, yeah, fire trucks. We can't do fire trucks or ambulances, those are outside of our, the risk that we would like to incur. Plus, they're, they're crazy expensive and that's not really our niche. I mentioned garbage trucks, some company, we are testing the waters on larger vehicles, but the issue becomes over 33,001 GBW federal excise tax gets involved and the IRS guideline doesn't specifically say leasing and tax exempt. You can cite four different IRS publications. I spent two hours with an IRS agent trying to figure this out. So, they can, so the dealership who sells that vehicle has to, at tax time, cite four different publications to make sure that they don't get hit with a penalty for tax exemptions on those large vehicles. Buckeye Western Star, who's the, who does a lot of the plows, said, no, thank you. And I said, I agree with that because the IRS agent, I said, can you put that in writing for me? And she said, no. I'm like, well, hmm, okay then. So, vehicles we can't do, it doesn't usually make sense to go into those large plow trucks, the double axles, the garbage trucks, that sort of thing. That's, it's not really our wheelhouse anyway and the tax exemption becomes kind of a muddy Uh, and the tax exemption becomes kind of a muddy waters.
What are the twelve vehicles then that will be freed up in the first year?
Uh, it's, it's a mix of different types of vehicles. Um, you got some police cruisers naturally, you got some sed, sedans and SUVs and pickup trucks. So I don't have that actual list specific on what it is. It's broken out between just the, your oldest ones.
I mean, I can tell you what we've budgeted for this year. We budgeted for the staff car for the fire department and one police cruiser for, um, Chief Hamlin. Or the two we've budgeted for. But if we have an opportunity to turn over other cars in our fleet, we would do that.
Yeah, so, so where we are right now, so like, so we're in the middle of two plans. So the plan we started says twenty-twenty-three, but there's only two vehicles you can factory order right now. And that's the Nissan Altima and the Chevy Silverado crew cab half-ton truck. Those are the only vehicles that are left. Everything else has been done for model year twenty-three.
Nissan Altima wouldn't have really any purpose here. It's a little sedan.
Yeah, it's mid-size, it's mid-size.
It's little.
I mean, compared to a pickup truck, yes.
The Ford Explorer, it's little.
Yes, yes, compared to that, yes. Uh, so, so where we are in the talks is that, that, there's two plans. What you need immediate, which immediate is between now and this time next year, we're probably going to source from what's on the ground or what's extra in our pools. And then we're going to start discussing twenty-twenty-four next year. So February of twenty-four through February of twenty-five and factory order those. So because it takes nowadays, it takes about eight to ten, twelve months to get vehicles. It used to be three to four that you would order it, now it takes eight to twelve months. Everything's just slow, everything's behind. So that's where being proactive comes into play. And so we want to have that. Should you guys give us a thumbs up, we move forward. Then that's when we'll meet with the department heads and really start diving into what can't last or what shouldn't make it over the next twelve months. And then what are we going to forecast for next calendar year and start that plan that way.
I mean, I, for one, would say, you know, we, I mean, I'm okay with moving forward. Like I said, the biggest thing for me is to make sure that we can, that, save some money on this. And if we can do that, then I think we continue to move forward. If it's going to be a wash, then I don't know why we would change at that point. But I think if we could save money, why would, you know, why wouldn't we at least look at it going forward? So that's my thought on it, so.
They were open to giving it a try. Just availability, but that's with anything, no matter what, it's availability, yeah.
Well, no matter what, we're going to be ordering a year out if, if we buy or if we would lease.
Yeah, what's interesting is through my twelve years of doing the, or ten years of working with government, is that for whatever reason, we're, when we order a vehicle, we're usually about four months faster than what government agencies can do. So like City of Delaware or County of Delaware, when we partnered together, it took us five, back in the good days, took us five months to get vehicles versus their usual nine. And we're still seeing that with like City of Athens and Huber Heights, who ordered vehicles a year ago. Still take them, they had some on order already before they partnered with us. They're still waiting on those and we got ours in earlier. So I don't know what that disconnect is on why government agencies, when you guys order, it takes longer. I, I don't understand that. But the other thing is, where I go with that is you have full visibility. You know, your team can see exactly where their vehicles are at all times. So we're working with them to build the orders, to place the orders. And then they can see it in our system, right on our website, where it is in its order process. So that visibility is fantastic for people.
So Huber Heights and Miami'sburg, they, um, use the police cruisers?
Miami'sburg does not, Huber Heights does. Uh, City Monroe does, they're our longest-tenured police cruiser. Uh, City of Logan, uh, City of Riverside, uh, City of Loveland, Summit County Sheriff. Fairborn, they've been a customer for a couple of years and I know that we did start off with cruisers. And Amanda is their client strategy manager. So I'm not sure if they switched into cruisers yet or not, but I know the police chief there was really excited about this.
And I mean, the ones that I see on here that I jerked through for work, Xenia, Huber Heights, Miami'sburg, I know they all, Pickwa, they use the Ford Explorer, same as us.
Huber Heights uses Durangos, Riverside uses.
Did they get Durangos now? Okay.
Yeah, they, so, uh, so in Pickwa's using Durangos, uh, Athens is using Durangos. People are switching to the Durangos because the interceptor utilities are starting, as I've been told, are starting to nickel and dime more on the maintenance side, more issues. The Durango is a little bit larger. Uh, it's a full-size versus a mid-size category for an SUV. Its resale value is a little more, a little better, about three to five thousand dollars more. Upfront price is pretty darn the same anymore these days and you can actually get them, so. Oh yeah, you can still factory order the twenty-three Durango, police, police model. We, we, um, one of the things for us is that we are brand agnostic. So we're not going to push any brand other than others. Our job is to share information and tell you, here's what's available, here's what's going on. So, you know, I, I was, I was talking, I talked to a lot of people about the Dodge Durango. I'm not trying to push that, I'm just saying, that's available, it's roughly the same price. So I'm not, not getting any kickbacks from Stellantis these days. I'm just throwing it out there. If you need a cruiser, that one is still available.
So the Durango isn't going to get better gas mileage than the Explorer though, right? Since it's larger?
No, they're all, they're all the V-six engines. I mean, you can order a V-eight Durango, but nobody needs that for an extra fourteen hundred bucks. We do this V-six primarily.
Any other questions or comments? Well, I think everyone kind of said that we would move forward as, I mean, is that, anybody disagree with that? At least to, to. Continue to run the numbers and.
So, um, my thought was, you know, now that you have all of this information, you have some time to digest it. Um, at the next council meeting, I can bring legislation that would allow us to enter into the agreement and council can have discussion at that time. Or if you have any questions in the meantime, between now and the next meeting, you can absolutely, you know, send questions to me and I'll be happy to get them to Jeremy and then get the answers out to the group. So you all have the same information.
Sound good?
All right.
Counsel? Okay, well, thank you very much for coming in.
Have a good night, good weekend.
Yes, you too.
I move to close the workshop.
I'll second.
Motion to close the workshop by Ms. Gorman, second by Mr. Lieberman, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?